I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everybody, welcome to tonight's board meeting. The first thing we need to do before we have our Students of the Month is we need to make a motion to nominate Tim Latrell as Acting Secretary for the evening. Would somebody make a motion for that nomination please?
A motion that we nominate Tim Latrell.
Tammy, who is second please?
I will.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we are going to do our October Students of the Month.
So, we'll start off with the high school. Mr. Cox is the high school principal.
Well, good evening. I want to start by saying, welcome to Beach Grove High School. Also, we have a lot, I have a lot to say tonight as far as recognition to people, so I'll start. We'll just talk a little bit about the school. The A to F DOE unofficial grades came out this week and we came out as a B, so we're really pleased with that. With TAP, we're working on continually with our academic vocabulary. And our winter athletics season's kicked off and matter of fact, we have a game tonight, our girls' basketball team's playing down in the main gym, so right after this, if you're not going, not too busy, go down and watch the girls' basketball team play as well. Also, congratulations and in order to shine, or for Cheyenne Price, she was selected as Edward Jones Investment Scholar-Athlete of the Month, so we're very pleased with Cheyenne. Also, we have a special recognition tonight for our Educator of the Month, and she just happens to be here tonight as a mom, so I'm gonna bring her up anyway. Beth, come on up, come on up here. Well, Beth's coming up. Obviously Beth puts countless of hours into many of the outside activities that we have at Beach Grove High School. She sponsors the Hornet Mentoring Program, the English Academic Team, the Spell Bowl. She's also the cheerleading coach. She's the English Department Head, she organizes all that stuff, she guides that department very well. As a teacher, there's been no better example of what's dedication, caring professionalism, and generally cares about all her students that she has. Her nurturing and positive attitude has helped many of the freshmen take the adjustment from the middle school to the high school, and also into life, and she is respected, well-liked, admired by all her peers and the students. And so, we're very lucky to have Beth in this building. For these reasons, Mrs. Higgins, who nominated her, several of our other faculty members and myself, were very proud to announce that Beth Wolf is nominated and is the November Educator of the Month, Beach Grove High Schools. Congratulations.
Thank you.
She'll get me later. A First Student of the Month at the high school is Shannon Neworth, and Shannon is getting ready to play a basketball game, so she won't be staying very long. Shannon was actually the September person, Student of the Month, and she's had obligations that she couldn't be here all the way back into September. So, she's the daughter of Ryan and Nancy Neworth, she's a senior, she has a 3.5+ GPA, she is in the top 25 of her class, she's involved in National Honor Society, Science Olympiad, Spanish Club, soccer, basketball, track and field, and tennis. She also's had three mission trips, she's been involved with the Southwood Baptist Church, and then also Servants Hearts, she works there as well. She plans to attend Purdue University and major in some sort of botany field, probably plant genetics or plant pathology. The teacher that recommended her back then was Mr. Banks, and he said Shannon's one of the most involved students that we have last summer, this past summer, she spent much of her time at Purdue University doing research, and because of her efforts, she's believed in identifying a new species of fungus, and we talked about that in September. And as that comes out to be approved, she'll have part ownership and she'll have something to do with naming that fungus. So, again, we're very proud of Shannon, our September student. Also, the Student of the Month for this month is Molly Wolf. Come on up Molly. And Molly's the daughter of Ross and Beth Wolf, she also has a 3.98+ GPA, she's in the top 10 of her class, she's been involved since Beach Grove High School, the Richard Luger Symposium, Hoosier Girl State, Riley Dance Marathon, HSA Leadership Conference, she's the senior class president, also Hornet Mentor President, Spell Bowl, tennis, Spanish Club, DECA, newspaper editor, yearbook, staff, recycling club, FCA, cheerleading, quill and scroll, National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Student Council. She doesn't have much time doing anything else, I don't think she sleeps either. She's been involved with St. Vincent's Spirit of Sport Ambassador, also the Mayor's Youth Council, and Peyton Manning's Advisory Board as well. She plans to attend the University of Indianapolis, and she's gonna study elementary education, unless we can convince her to be a high school teacher. Molly's comments, Mr. Johnson has been, she's been a part of Mr. Johnson's life for several years, and she's involved in the cheer program, she's also part of the Student Council, he's very appreciative of her. Also, Mr. Mazinga, who's here tonight, wrote, "Molly's doing a cadet teaching at South Grove Elementary under the supervision of Nancy Wilson. Mrs. Wilson has nothing but praise for her. She's always demonstrated enthusiasm and perfection regarding assignments turned in to me. Students like Molly sell this program to all our other schools." So, again, Student of the Month, Molly Wolf. We also want to recognize some C9 students that are here part of the day at Beach Grove, and then, or they go out and they go to C9 and then they go to HEA, or they job, share a job work somewhere. One of them's Justin Stauffer, he's not here today, I don't think Justin came in. He's in Precision Machinery, and his teacher is Mr. Willoughby, and he said Justin worked very hard and earns an internship at Greenwood Models, so he goes out and works through C9. Chelsea Kirkpatrick, she's here, where's Chelsea, come on up. Chelsea also, as I said, is here part of the day, and then she goes to C9, and she's in Health Science 1. She plans to go to college and pursue a career in OB-GYN. She's dedicated and determined as to do well in her chosen career field. She's very respectful, dependable, pleasant, and is very helpful to other classmates. She's truly a joy to have in her class, and this is Ms. Riblin, is her teacher down at C9. So, again, Chelsea Kirkpatrick, C9 Student of the Month. Also, Shawna Harrison, is Shawna here, I didn't see Shawna come in. Shawna is, was selected in law enforcement, and she, here at school, she's involved in soccer, swimming, track and field, wrestling, and FCA. She does, in her activities in the outside of school, she's a cadet for the Sheriff's Department, as well as works with homeless shelters. She's gonna go to college and pursue criminal justice as a degree, and then she wants to be an EMT and on the side be a firefighter. Her teachers felt like she is one of the most focused individuals that they've ever known for her age. She set her goals high, she believes that she'll earn it and reach out, and reach her goal, so we're very proud of her at C9 obviously. The fourth person, like to introduce to you, is Cody Salas. Cody, where are you at? There he is. Now Cody is in Culinary Arts. Cody is kinda unique, 'cause he's a great chef. One of his chefs wrote that he felt that he goes, does everything he asked in the kitchen, he's more prepared than anybody else, and he takes every responsibility, and he helps every other student down there as well. His goal is to go to Sullivan University and get a degree there in Culinary Arts, and he's gonna open his own restaurant. Hopefully, he'll be back here in Beach Grove or in Indianapolis somewhere. So, very proud of Cody. Also tonight, other pleasure to speak a little bit about the Hornet Richmond Academy. Kelly couldn't be here tonight, her sons are in a band banquet, and one of her sons is getting a big award for a senior, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the HEA, I actually read something she wrote. "Our year continues to progress at the HEA. Our students are working hard and have earned 74 credits this semester. I also have mentioned that almost 21 of those credits are in math, which is great. Mr. Cahill works one-on-one with every student that's down there, and we pleased with the progress that they're making in math. Each Wednesday, we continue our Life Skills Wellness Program during the month of November. Our Life Skills Focus was community service. HEA staff and students volunteered at the Cleaners Food Bank through the month of November, and they're going to also in December. This opportunity's been an ongoing collaboration project between the staff and our students. Also during the program on Wednesday, students work with Mrs. Newman on physical wellness. In October, I think it was October 30th, Mrs. Newman taught the lesson Determining Health, Weight, and Students Participating in Soccer Activity. She's also gonna come back in December and continue their quest for physical fitness and wellness. As they enter the final stretch of the first semester, we have several students that we think are gonna finish the requirements for graduation. They're working on their final credits and completing an HEA vocational portfolio, which is something that's new. These students will participate in professional interviews and present their portfolio for an assessment. This is a cultivating project for HEA for this semester, and we're looking forward for the students that are gonna be ready to graduate from the HEA." The Student of the Month of HEA is Tyler Curry. Come on up Tyler. Tyler's a senior in HEA. Tyler's the son of Jim and Sony Curry. Tyler was nominated for his diligent effort toward academic success. He demonstrates effectively study skills each day, and it simplifies the characteristics of being a successful HEA student. As a result, Tyler has been earned two credits off so far this semester. He has worked hard to progress academically and demonstrates his commitment to both academics and personal growth. Mrs. Condon comments that Tyler's attitude, work ethic, and perseverance is commendable. Likewise, Mr. Anslet stated that Tyler has a positive attitude and is a peer role model for other students. Mr. Ansler also commented that Tyler leads the discussions during his group mentoring activities. Tyler goes about his daily work quietly and very efficiently, is respectful to staff and students, and makes a positive contribution to our school community. We congratulate Tyler for his commitment to personal growth, and we're looking forward to the ongoing success of Hornet Richmond Academy, and I'm looking forward to him graduating. So, again, congratulations to Tyler. Great job.
Well, good evening everyone. I'm Erin Thomas, the principal at Hornet Park Elementary, and very pleased to be here with you this evening. Just a couple of quick little updates for what's taking place at Hornet Park. Tonight, I wanted to spend just a moment highlighting some of the partnerships we have going on, especially with lots of our high school students. You know, they talk, research talks about how if students have one person in their life that shows that they love and care about a student, it can change the adult that they become, right? So, at Hornet Park, we have a staff full of people that love the kids, but we also are blessed because we have a long list of people who come, that might be high school students, or volunteers, that partner with us, and love and care on our kids, and help them learn the skills they need to be successful. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to certain people who helped make those partnerships a possibility for Hornet Park. Mr. Mark James from the high school arranges for certain students to come and join us. Alex Harkle Road, Butch Mazinga, who's here tonight. Kelly Skilern. We also have had shadowers come from Plainfield High School and Center Grove High School lately. And then, we also have a variety of parents, that may be parents of students, or actually parents of staff members as well. So, I just think that's a lovely thing, that in a world where everyone is quite busy and stretched a little too thin, that people are still making time, whether it's out of their high school schedule or out of their adult life schedule to come and contribute to the lives of our youngest. So, thank you so much. Also, we have had quite an eventful late October at Hornet Park. We've had things like our book fair, our canned food drive, grandparents' night, oh goodness, skating party, parent-teacher conferences, it's been hopping over at Hornet Park. So, thank you all for supporting those events. And to kind of bring it down a little, Friday's PJ Day, so we're gonna recover on Friday. So, if you see me in pajamas on Friday, I'm telling you, that's the job to have when you can have a PJ Day. So, Hornet Park students, we welcome you to wear your pajamas on Friday. So, tonight, you know, I would love to go on and on, and my peers know that I like to talk, but I will move on to that which is most exciting, that's talking about our Student of the Month. So, I would like to call up Lavander Gogans. Come on up buddy. I have some special words to say for many of his teachers. From Mrs. Bennett, she says, "He is always polite and respectful to teachers and other students. He's a joy to see at lunch and on the playground." So, she has him in some of the other areas of the school. From Mrs. Stoltz, "Lavander is such a sweet boy and a hard worker. He's always one that I can count on for good behavior and to be a positive role model. He continues to make wonderful progress because he works so hard and is motivated to improve his speech. He's a joy to work with." On down, Ms. Coon says, "Lavander is super sweet. He's respectful, polite, gets along with everyone, and is a self-motivated learner. He is a delight." And finally, from Mrs. Hanson, his classroom teacher, "He is a great student, hard-working, good listener, and always tries his best. He has shown a lot of academic growth and is excited about his learning. He is a good leader in our class, and he treats others kindly. He is friends with everyone." So, friends, I'd like to introduce you to Lavander Gogans.
I will do my best this evening. I'm really honored to be able to stand in for Mr. Buckler tonight. He had a couple of announcements that he wanted to share before we move into our Student of the Month. First off, he wanted to remind folks that the second grade holiday program will be at 7 o'clock on Tuesday, December the 10th. That will be in the auditorium at Beach Grove High School. He is also wanting folks to remember that the annual holiday luncheons are taking place, that will be on Tuesday, December the 18th for the third graders, and Wednesday, December the 19th for the second graders. It's a wonderful opportunity for family members to join their Central students for a delicious lunch. I've been to that holiday luncheon, and it is not to be missed, so that'll be a great couple of days at Central Elementary School, and Mr. Buckler certainly hopes that family members can attend. The most important piece of this evening for me is that I get to honor a very special student. Tonight, we're honoring for Central Elementary School, San Calp Strivastava, Central Elementary School Student of the Month for November. San Calp, I have a lot of amazing things to say about you, and Mr. Buckler was so sad that he couldn't be here tonight because he just went on and on about how special of a student you are. So, I've got a lot to say. It's my pleasure to introduce San Calp Strivastava as our October Student of the Month. San Calp is a third grader in Mrs. Tau's classroom. She describes him as the ideal student. He's a fantastic helper, extremely hard worker, and he's always eager to learn. He's always on task and paying attention. She states that she could not ask for a better behaved, more responsible, or more respectful student. Mr. Viscollins, our physical education teacher echoes those comments, describing San Calp as thoughtful, courteous, and eager to learn. In Applied Technology, Mrs. Weesjohn reports that San Calp is a very respectful, responsible, and dependable student. He always listens closely to the instruction which allows him to be very successful. Mrs. Etters says that in music class, San Calp is polite and a good leader. He's always willing to volunteer to answer a question. He's engaged in learning, and he takes a genuine interest in the subject matter. I'm telling you, this keeps going. In Art, Mrs. Sutton says San Calp is always the first student to volunteer to help, not only the teacher, but his fellow students as well. His attitude is very contagious. He is kind, polite, enthusiastic to learn, and always has a smile on his face. He's a wonderful example of some of the great things at Central Elementary. Mr. Buckler believes that San Calp is a fine example of an extraordinary student, and he is pleased to have him represent Central Elementary. It is my pleasure to introduce San Calp Strivastava as Central's October Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Our next school is South Grove Elementary School, which is a 456 building. Didn't dawn on me till I saw that Mr. Buckler had Mrs. Dr. Hammack, and now Mrs. Reed, who went home sick today, asked me to do hers, so we kinda have a change in gender going on here. That was very interesting.
We could've thought about that more there.
Yeah, we could've. Mrs. Reed wanted me to make just a few announcements. South Grove teachers are sending home their progress reports this week. If a student gets a D or an F in a class, they receive a report. We encourage parents to go to the Parent Connect to receive timely information about the progress of their students. If a parent does not have their Parent Connect code, they should call the school and make sure they can get one. So, this is extremely important because for people who got a D or an F, these reports will be coming out, and it's important that the parents understand what's going on here. Also, South Grove is going to have their holiday program. It is Thursday, December the 5th. They will have two performances, one at 2 o'clock and one at 7 o'clock. The program features our fifth grade students and fifth grade choir, the singing beats. And we would like to introduce and congratulate South Grove's Student of the Month, Dean Eller. Is Dean here? Dean is not here. Dean is a sixth grade student and is the son of Sarah Eller. He is a media mogul, helping out in the library and a member of the sixth grade boys' basketball team. Mrs. Olmich, Dean's teacher, says that Dean is an excellent student. He is so kind-hearted and hard-working. He takes initiative with his learning and strives to do the best he can. I always know I can count on Dean, no matter the task. He is cheerful every day when he walks through the door. He truly makes this year very special. Mrs. Wilson says, "Dean is an enthusiastic learner and a great boy. As a fifth grader in my class last year, Dean was a great classroom helper, both to me and his classmates. Because of his strong interest in books, I asked him to assist in maintaining order in our classroom library. Every time I put a new book in our classroom library, he was the first to investigate the titles, and eagerly began reading all of them. As the year progressed, he began making suggestions as to which books I would purchase next. His suggestions came from his reading of the mini-series in the classroom library, and when he finished the last one of the series that I had, he suggested I get the next one. Due to Dean's love of reading, my classroom library is much larger than it was when he entered the fifth grade." Mr. Brewer, Dean's fourth grade teacher, says Dean was a great fourth grade student. He was ready, responsible, and respectful. I was so impressed with him that I asked him to be a buzz club mentor this year as a sixth grader. I knew he would be a good role model and a helper. Miss Hackman shared this, "Dean was a witness to a small fourth grade student who was getting teased at the bus stop. When I questioned Dean and the student, it was apparent that Dean was genuinely concerned for his student and his safety. Two days after the incident was handled, Dean returned to my office to check on the fourth grade student and make sure there weren't any problems for him." At South Grove, we recognize a Student of the Month, Dean, who is an upstanding kid who will help the boys. And then, she has a way to go, Dean. So, congratulations.
And we'll end with Mr. Gerhard from the Middle School.
Good evening. Just a couple of things from the Middle School. We have eight students that participated Saturday in a robotics competition at Decatur Central, and as of Monday, we now have 10 students in our robotics club. Congratulations to that team and their inaugural competition, finishing 14th out of 33, which I think is outstanding for their first-time competition. They were only 10 points out of the final round. Also, want to congratulate not only our high school band for finishing third place in the C-class, but specifically the 29 middle school students that competed with them in the musical part as well as the guard. We shifted some things around, our original sports jam was gonna be tonight, but to make sure that everybody gets to participate as much as possible, we postponed that to next week. So, it's gonna be Tuesday, the 26th, and that's also coupled with the canned food drive. And now, for our Student of the Month, James Cox, if you would come forward. While I read these wonderful things about you. The Titan team selected James Cox as Student of the Month for November 23rd, for November 2013. James possesses many of the qualities we believe make a successful student within the classroom and the community. In the classroom, James displays a solid work ethic. He is consistently prepared for class, ready to learn, and eager to volunteer. He actively participates and engages in class discussions and activities while asking serious and thoughtful questions. To his teachers and classmates, James is always ready with kind words and a smile. James turns in all of his assignments and displays a positive attitude towards school, classmates, coaches, and teachers. His positive energy is infectious and a definite asset in the classroom for his peers as well as his teachers. In art, James always walks in the room with the eagerness to learn and create. He puts forth extra effort, sometimes even sacrificing his own time in order to make sure his projects are completed to his expectations by the deadline. When recreating a master's work, James was adamant about matching his colors perfectly. His work in art reflects his enthusiasm, discipline, and his attention to detail. This hard work, dedication, and diligence paid off, and his large-scale sculpture will be displayed in the art show at the end of the school year. James is a true joy to have in class. James is also a leader on the athletic field. As a member of the boys' cross-country team, he led by example daily. He attended summer conditioning to improve his endurance, making him a top runner for the boys' team. He organized group stretching, ensuring that all runners were focused and on task. James always gave 100% of practice and never complained about a workout. James earned all conference honors when he placed ninth in the highly competitive field and ran a personal best time of 11 minutes 30 seconds. As a result of all of his hard work and dedication, James was chosen as the most valuable runner for the boys' 2013 cross-country team. The Titan teachers would like to congratulate James on his tremendous work so far this year. We greatly enjoy the fresh outlook and bright smile that he brings to our classrooms every day. Thank you for, thank you James, for all of your hard work. We look forward to seeing what you can accomplish by the end of your eighth grade year. Congratulations.
This fall, actually, Mrs. Exton's gonna talk a little bit about it, but this fall, we continued what has been a year and a half of a high-achieving athletic program at Beach Grove Middle School. So, we are very proud to recognize our girls' cross-country team. We talked a little bit about that last month. They finished this season...
They finished this season 60 and 0. So I'd like to invite up right now to say a few things, not only Coach Eckstein, but Coach Kessler and Coach Masingo. If you three will come up.
And I'm going to ask all of the girls who are here to come on up also. All right, so we had 20 girls on our team this year. We went 60 and 0, which is a first time for the middle school. Last year, we ended our season with high hopes. We were second in the Marion County Meet, and we had five returning runners. So we knew we had the possibility for a very strong season. We had several ladies, raise your hand if you attended summer conditioning this summer. We had several that gave up sleeping in and came over to the middle school at 7:00 in the morning to run, to get us in shape early on in the season, which was important because one of our first invites that we hit was the Whiteland Invite, and we were surprised by a team from Eastern Green. Closest competition of our season, where we squeaked out a win by four points. And the whole time, the girls were like, "Coach, did we win? Did we win?" And I'm like, "I don't know." But I can tell you that every single one of you ran your hearts out, and every one of you did your personal best. So that was our big shock of the season. We won the Beech Grove Invite, next came County. All season long, we prepared, we were shooting for top 3. We know we wanted to be top 2. We knew our competition was Fall Creek Valley, and we knew if we hit it right, we had a chance for 1st. We were trying to count places, and as we're waiting for the rewards, it starts raining, and lightning hits after they announce 3rd place, and all of us are looking and going, "Please say who was 2nd and 1st." We never heard the score because as soon as they said 2nd was Fall Creek Valley, we were screaming and hugging and jumping up and down. So we were very grateful, and just that culminating event and a first time ever for Beech Grove Middle School to win the county meet. Then we went on to win conference to seal our 60 and 0 season. I can say, as a coach, I've never worked with a better group of young ladies. They are wonderfully devoted, never complain, and always give 100%, which is why they are so successful. Every single girl reaches her potential. We're losing four of our top seven, and they're going to be very difficult to replace, and that 8th grade leadership is going to be very missed. But we're going to return a lot of determined girls. We have a lot of young ladies who are going to continue to make strides, and we're shooting for top 5 next year in the county, and we're going to see what happens. So congratulations, ladies, and have a wonderful season.
Okay, we're going to finish the remainder of our meeting. So, Mr. Collins, could we have a curriculum update, please?
Yeah. Because of the balanced calendar, we have all kinds of activities that Dr. Hammack has talked about. But what we haven't talked too much about is there's some opportunities for students to catch up on the classes that they're not passing, and especially at the high school. What happens is, is if you get too far behind, you just kind of give up. So during this intercession time that they really go for the two full weeks, students can come back, part of us online, part of us with teachers, to catch up if they have a not-passing grade. So our first figure is how many kids actually improved their grades because they were given this opportunity to come back. You notice that we had 91 people, participants, improve. I just think that's really great because the activities that are, you know, more, not so much academic, but to have this opportunity for kids to eventually pass their courses and stay in school, and it's just something the balanced calendar has given us. The other things I wanted to pass on to you is TAP and clusters. That's a professional development that meets every week throughout the year. Each have different strategies they're working on. You know, so Hornet Park, they're doing thinking and problem-solving, but they're using kind of a Buccaneer Pirate point-of-view type thing. So they're doing treasure chests and things like that. It's really cute to see, but they're really doing thinking and problem-solving. Central's doing informative texts, which is, that's the way the I-Step is going, more informational text, less, a little more literary type thing. And they're doing the detective test, they call it. And then we have the 4 through 12 going together, and they're working on academic vocabulary. That means every subject is picking 30 words that are going to ensure that the kids learn. And every year, in every subject, 30, by the time they're seniors, they should have quite an increased vocabulary. Then they're going to team again together for the next strategy, which with the D-Maps, which I'll tell you a little bit about when they start. But I'd like to know what they're doing in their clusters.
Dr. Hammack?
Yes, ma'am. In my update this month, I just had a couple of snippets, just little brief updates for you all. First off, one that is always exciting when we're talking about getting extra dollars to the corporation. We told you about that Secured School Safety Grant that we had applied for in the fall. We did receive notification that we received that grant. We didn't receive the full amount that we were hoping for. I even sent an email hoping that they would reconsider, but I have not heard back. But we are absolutely intending to apply for the second round for the grant opportunity in the spring, and we're real hopeful that we'll get the full funding then. We did receive $35 additional $1,000, so I mean, that is nothing to snip at, but we were really hoping for the whole 50. Those dollars will go directly for security cameras at our buildings, as well as locked front-entry systems that have a notification video monitor in the office. And so it's going to be a really nice safety enhancement for our boys and girls and our families. Just a little update on fall intercession. We talked at the last meeting about the types of intercession opportunities that would be offered. This month, I just wanted to highlight one of the intercession programs because it was new and different this year. Mr. Bush Collins and his swimmers helped learn swim lessons here at the high school. And we had a ton of kids who were not swimmers who participated. Upwards of 90-some students were engaged and learned to swim, and it was just a really wonderful opportunity. You know, when you're kind of landlocked like we are here in Beech Grove, you don't think it's often about really the life-saving capacity of knowing how to swim, but it is so important, and I just feel so great about that. And we received a ton of positive feedback from our families about that offering. Mr. Bush Collins was super psyched about it, too, and I think that they're really thinking about what they might have to offer in the spring.
Yeah, because we haven't had a swim lesson here in Beech Grove for a while.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, what a great opportunity, you know, for our kids to come and interact with the high school students, you know, because that's cool, too, and, you know, that whole thing. I just thought that was great. Couple of special education topics. We are, I think I update you as much as I can about indicators that we are monitored for by the Department of Education. Indicator 11 was just up in the fall, and that is the indicator that monitors our evaluations being conducted in a timely fashion. We are required to get all initial, special education evaluations done in a 50-day timeline, and all of our IEPs passed that compliance piece. So we were pretty proud of that as well. We got all of our assistants trained in autism spectrum disorder. That is a requirement by the state, and we had a really nice session with our instructional assistants, so good stuff there. And we just continue to be busy in special education, and it's a wonderful thing. So, any questions?
Dr. Hammack, would you just mention about our new addition to the high school special ed department?
You bet. You know, as we have been analyzing kind of our best practice special education delivery for our students, sort of K through 12, we have been analyzing caseloads and really wanting to deliver the best possible service in special education to students with IEPs who need it. As I've been here, this is my fifth year in Beech Grove, every year that I've been here, our special education numbers have increased. And it's not just the number of students who are qualified, who are eligible, you know, for special services. It's, the intensity of the need is much greater every year that I've been here. So with that, you all and Dr. Kaiser and Dr. Keely have been so supportive of adding staff as the need has presented. And really, one of our last sort of holes in the cheese in the special ed department was at the high school. We are currently now at every building in Beech Grove able to staff one special education teacher per grade level, with the exclusion of Hornet Park and the high school at this point. But now, we had a wonderful student teacher who worked with Donna Hall, who was in place this fall at the high school, and we just really had kind of a perfect scenario happen where we had increased numbers at the high school, where we had much more of a need. We had this incredible student teacher who we really believed, you know, could be an incredible addition to our team. And we had, and it'll be in your personality piece this evening, we had an instructional aide actually just left the corporation for personal reasons. So we had kind of an opportunity to really study the numbers that we had at the high school, and we made the recommendation that we would add a teaching position for special education at the high school. So that would mean now that we have one dedicated resource teacher per grade level at the high school, one working with 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, and really growing our certificate track program, which is one of our programs that hasn't had as much attention as it kind of needs. So I'm thrilled about this and really believe that there is a serious need. We have a ton of 8th graders who are identified who will be coming up next year, and this will just be the staffing in place that's exactly, you know, sort of what we recommend. It's a great problem to have, I mean, you know, it's a great thing to be able to have the staff to address all these needs.
And a special thanks to Melody Stevens, who recommended.
Oh, yeah, you are the reason for this, Melody. That's right. She is a phenomenal student teacher. I mean, this, her name is Sarah Gray, and she is, you know, you get those stars that, you know, you just know are going to be phenomenal teachers, and she's one. She's just, she is dynamic, and can't wait to be a Hornet. Exciting.
A couple things, and you guys can read this, too, but the dirt's appreciation night that we held at the high school was really a wonderful evening. In fact, I just had the pleasure of being like the hostess for the evening, but really the credit goes to Dr. Kaiser, a group called Americans That Care, Steve Cox, Matt English. They're the ones that really made it happen. And it was just really a neat evening, and I had the pleasure, though I've been getting thank-you notes from veterans for, because I was the contact, about that evening. So it was really, was nice and wonderful, and everybody really appreciated it. So it was a great, great evening at Beech Grove High School. Also, I know that you all have seen this, but I wanted to bring it when we were on camera, that our cover stars, Wiley, make sure you get a good copy, close-up of this. But Dr. Keely and Dr. Hammack were on the Southside Times, and they were talking about bullying and the new statutes and all that, so, but they're our cover stars. So I wanted to make sure that our Beech Grove public knew that we have two cover people here at Beech Grove City Schools, so.
Everybody's wanting autographs for that night.
That's right.
We'll stay after the meeting.
Yeah. And anybody in the public that would like that, please see them here at the office. Beech Grove Walmart came this past week, and they were really wonderful. They contacted me, it's the second year, and they have come to our elementary schools, to Central, to Hornet Park, excuse me, and South Grove, and they did a drawing. It was really fun, because actually, the Student of the Month for Central was one of the kids that drew names for teachers. But the kids came up to the office and they drew names, five names. Five teachers from each school received $50 gift cards from Walmart. In addition, they brought four backpacks that were brimming full of supplies for each school. And they were kind enough to ask me ahead of time, which then I asked the principals, "What kind of supplies do you need for your students and teachers?" So they were very specific to each school on what they needed. So I just want to thank Erin, who was our co-manager at Walmart, who came and presented all three schools, and they just, the schools were thrilled, and teachers were excited, and the kids were like beyond excited. And we also took everything to the room. Like, once we announced on the PA, then we went down and took pictures in the different rooms with the teachers being presented with their gift cards. So that was exciting. And then just a little bit later, we're going to see a resolution that we're asking for to be able to partner with the Great Beech Grove Chamber of Commerce, and either Dr. Keely or I could answer any questions a little bit later, but I think it's an exciting opportunity. We already have a great partnership, but this will help us to be even closer, and we feel like it will really help our students, HEA High School, to really have that closer partnership with area businesses, and that's going to be even a better plus for us. So, and then as far as Beech Grove Education Foundation, I attend the INPEF Commerce in October. There's going to be a Pacers fundraiser game, which I'll make sure you get the date for the end of February, and that's going to be exciting because our Beech Grove High School Choir is going to be singing the National Anthem that evening.
Oh, cool.
At the Pacers game. So it's going to be a really exciting time, and so we're trying to make it extra special. So look for more details, so we'll be giving you those. And then we had our Foundations Barnes and Noble fundraiser, and we raised $111. So every little bit counts for our teacher grants and our scholarships, so. In a nutshell, that's what's been going on in my area of the world.
We need to get a motion to approve the minutes, March 8th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we need to get a motion to approve the November 5th public hearing minutes.
Motion approved.
Mike?
Second.
Ben? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have claims to approve in the amount shown on here, because it's so big, $5,672,912.79. Who would make a motion to approve that, please?
I don't know. We agree with the ladies.
Ben, who's second, please?
I'll second.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Keely, looks like you've got a bunch.
I will try to go quick. They are big dollars, and they are a big business transaction, so I do want to, some things are things I've prepped you for as far as transfers of monies and different things, and a couple things are brand-new. So the Affordable Care Act, there was a revision by Bose McKinney &amp; Evans with something we approved in September. I just revisited it to bring it back because there was a typo. The Indiana Code 20-2654, Article 17, was misrepresented in the initial contract language to talk about how we as administrators deal with the Affordable Care Act. It's the same premise. We're doing the best we can as the law changes. We continue to make change, and there's a lot of uncertainty of the future, and this policy just gives us a separate board action that protects us as we do in our due diligence the best we possibly can to counter the reform. Because we do provide health insurance for a lot of families, employees and their, and their families, and so it's an important act. So, that being said, we do need to re-adopt the revised indemnification policy proposed to us by Jim Hamilton, attorney at Bose McKinney &amp; Evans.
I'll make a motion to re-adopt.
I'll second.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we need to talk about funds for capital projects?
Correct. Number 2 and 3, we'll talk about the fact that the Indiana State Legislature changed distribution of tax dollars in 2013. We had set our budget a year ago in 2012 about this time, anticipating more money in debt service and pension debt service. However, when they got into the legislature and had their meetings in January and February, a new bill was proposed to, in the current year of 2013, not funnel all the dollars into debt service, and that's a bucket of money, a fund, where we could pay all of our bills at the end of the year. So instead, they changed the law in March effective, and it funneled money across all funds. By doing that, it shorted money for basically our mortgage, school mortgage payments of the buildings and leases, okay? So $800,000 got dropped into a fund called Capital Projects. Well, we don't have permission to spend, nor do we have things to spend, that $800,000, so we need to take that money and put it into the rainy day. Then, the second motion will be an additional appropriation to expend that $800,000 on the debt service payment. That if they would have populated the debt service fund like it was supposed to, we would have the money to pay the bills. So I'm asking... So I'm asking permission in a resolution to transfer money from one fund over to Rainy Day, so from Capital Projects into Rainy Day. And then in the second motion is a hearing. We need to open up a hearing, and then I can answer any questions on the additional appropriation. Then we'll need to close that hearing, and then we'll have a motion to adopt our ability to pay. The one in additional appropriation is it's giving me permission, our board is asking the state of Indiana, can we have permission to spend this $800,000 in this appropriate way? And they're going to understand what happened, because they work in the state government, and so they'll, the DLGF will be able to understand why I have to transfer these dollars. And so, it's kind of a shell game, and I apologize, but it's not something that I've created, it's something that I'm reacting to.
I'm going to ask a question.
Okay.
As I always do. How come you can't take the money from the capital projects and put it back into debt service? Because we can only spend out of the rainy day, is that correct?
Yeah, we are probably not allowed, we're not allowed to take dollars out of other funds and populate it to
To another fund.
Another one. But we are allowed to take money out of CPF, Capital Projects, and place it in Rainy Day.
Okay.
Because it's additional money that was not anticipated.
Okay.
So that's a great question, because if it was simple, and I could just write a check out of the Capital Projects Fund for the mortgage payment, I would. But that's against the law. So I'm trying to follow, they changed the law on me, and I'm trying to follow the law as diligently as possible. And so the state board of accounts will understand that this is a legal transaction and it's appropriate.
Okay.
I wish I could have Brian, Tom, and Michael cut the check out of CPF to pay the bond, you know, the mortgage payment at Bank of New York Mellon, but we're not allowed to.
And you just can't take that money and put it into another account to cover it? You'd have to put it in Rainy Day.
Right, and so it's weird, and you have to think of it like, when you put money in transportation, you need to spend it on bus drivers, right? When you put money, when money is given to us from the state for bus replacement, we better buy a bus with it.
Sure.
Capital Projects is electricity, gas, roofs, it's cap, you know, it's projects.
Right.
And so, we just can't spend that money on that. And so this is kind of the shell game that I'm legally playing, and it's just kind of a reaction to a new state law that went into effect in March. And I knew what was going on, I just waited to watch the distribution of dollars until today, so that I can end the year doing things right. So that's the whole, the whole reason. So we can walk through those motions together, and I can help you. The first one is the resolution to transfer funds.
I would move we adopt the resolution to transfer funds.
I'll have a second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If you just want to go right down through the motions, I've set them up where it should open and do the appropriate.
I move we open the additional appropriation hearing.
I'll have a second, then.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will make a comment on the additional appropriation hearing. What we are doing is, I am, I will, I'm asking the board president for permission to appropriate expending $600,000 and $350,000, $600,000 from the referendum fund. I'm sorry, here it is. The referendum fund needs to expand, it has extra money in there that was not spent, because I didn't have to spend that amount of money in transportation, because more money went over there. So my permission is, I would like to spend $350,000 extra out of referendum and $250,000 extra out of the Rainy Day Fund for operating expenses intended for each individual fund, which totals $600,000.
And you're doing this, just to explain to everybody, because where they sliced the pie, they didn't slice it the way we intended it as the budget, they sliced it evenly, and now you need to move it so that it covers the expenses that you had budgeted previously.
Correct.
Correct.
Due to an Indiana state law change during the current year.
Yes. I just want everybody to understand that.
And let me add something to this point. Tom and I last Tuesday had a chance, we were asked to testify in front of the General Assembly Tax Commission, Commission hearing that was established in last year's General Assembly. And the topic we testified on was this, called protected taxes. There was a bill passed last year that said you had to pay your debt first, and the money went through the rest of your accounts. So we planned, as Tom said, we planned the budget that way. Well, then they changed the law midstream, because everybody was screaming, because large districts like Westfield and other districts were going to lose a lot of money and not build new their budget. So then they changed it back, how they did it from 2009 to 2012. So we testified, and Senator Charbonneau from up north asked us the question, wouldn't it be easier if you just had your general fund in one fund that all the money went into? We said, absolutely. It's silly how we fund schools. You know, here's the tax rate, let it go into a fund called operating, where we pay debt, capital projects, and then the school corporations, based on where their needs are. We're lucky because we have the referendum fund. So, we spent a lot of money on transportation on a referendum, and that's why we did it to start with, but it gives us a lot of flexibility moving forward. So, I really believe in the 2014 General Assembly, there will be a lot of discussion, I mean, that schools will have two funds. Your general fund, which is generated by how many kids show up every day, and then your tax fund. Everything goes into one fund. And Tom and I will be happy, because, you know, then we don't have to do all this crazy stuff at the end of the year. We, we have a balanced budget in our general fund in '13, and we have a balanced budget in our operating funds. So we're paying our bills. It's just that when they place them in categories where we don't want them, we have to move them. So Rainy Day becomes that, that checking account where you can move money to and make anything out of Rainy Day. So, but we hope the law will change.
Okay, before we do that, don't we have to make a motion to close the additional appropriation hearing for the one that we just carried a minute ago, and then make a motion to adopt what we just talked about?
Correct.
Correct. He was just doing the extra one.
Talking, the open, was the open forum, so if there are any initial questions by the public, I can answer those. And now we'll close the hearing?
Okay, so we need to make a motion.
I, I have one question.
Sure.
When you say you're taking referendum money.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not moving referendum. I'm moving, see, I'm expending extra referendum dollars.
Mike, we have more cash in there than they gave us permission to spend originally, okay? When you, when you do your budget, because it's an 18-month budget, DLGF never does the budget right, okay? And appropriation is just, okay, we're giving you permission to spend. Well, because we didn't spend every penny we had last year, and we collect more in excise tax and things like that, they set our permission to spend at like 1.2 million. We're actually bringing in more than that, because we have cash. So now we have to go back and ask them permission to spend the cash that we already have, if that makes sense. It's money that we had from last year, appropriation doesn't carry over from year to year. So every year, so when we advertised the budget, we didn't know how much money we were going to spend in '12, so we were efficient and had some money left over. The cash carries over, so when we advertised the budget, they, they gave us less appropriation. So we knew since last February, we would have to do an additional appropriation in the referendum fund. But we didn't do it till now, because we wanted to see how much we needed to do it for.
I thought, I thought that you said you were moving
Capital Projects, 800, in a full amount.
Right, I mean, $350,000 out of the referendum fund.
No, that's, that's the, I'm requesting the additional appropriation, which is the request to spend an extra 350 over the appropriation that they gave us. So I want to go from 1.25 million to 1.6 million, because I have that much cash in that fund. And then in Rainy Day, I have an appropriation of 600, you know, of 600,000, but I want to spend 800 on debt, so I need an appropriation, which is permission to spend, of 250. I'm not moving any referendum dollars, because referendum you can spend in any one of the funds.
Referendum's almost like Rainy Day, you can spend it on
But I have moved cash into Rainy Day, and I had additional cash in referendum. And I'm just asking to spend those additional dollars on the debt service mortgage payments I need to, to pay the bills on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was tracking that correctly.
Yeah, and I'm not moving, I don't move, and I would not move referendum dollars, because they're pretty flexible as it is.
Yeah, and the thing that's tough when you do a budget, you know, we, we did our 14 budget in Jim.
Right.
And you never know how much cash you're going to have at the end of the year, and some years it's more, some years it's less. You never know how much cash you're actually going to collect. Some years, we may only collect 85% of taxes. And sometimes we spend money out of general fund to leave extra money in referendum, because referendum gives us flexibility. So it's like a, it's like a big game of chess in what we do. I mean, Brian and Tom have already worked on the cash flow for '13 and '14, but it's kind of a guessing game. We just found out, because we had student enrollment, we're going to get another $120,000 November, December, which is great, which helps our cash flow. But if our enrollment goes down in February, we might lose it. We went from a, an 18-month budget and a 12-month expenditure, now we're looking at six-month budgets because of the flow of revenue, especially in the general fund. It's
But we have to make that decision for all of 2014, 18 months in advance.
Right.
Even though our money can change on a six-month basis. So it makes it pretty challenging.
So we'll be back next November, December, asking to move some money to Rainy Day, because you don't want to leave it in Capital Projects. Any money you have left over, you want to move it to Rainy Day, then you can spend it on transportation, debt. You can still spend it on capital project type things. If we want to buy pizza for the cross-country team, you can pay for it out of Rainy Day. You know, if you want to buy football helmets, you know, you can pay for it out of Rainy Day, but you can't pay for it out of Capital Projects. So we want to give as much money in Rainy Day, because it's our flexible fund. And so every year, any money that's left in CPF, we will move to Rainy Day, and then we can spend it on anything. So, but great questions.
So we need to make a motion to close the additional appropriation hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the additional appropriation hearing.
Tammy, hold on a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we need to make a motion to adopt the additional appropriation resolution.
Motion to adopt.
All right, hold on a second, please.
I'll second that.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, do you want to talk about the Indiana Bond Bank?
Yeah, Indiana Bond Bank allows us to pay our bills ahead of time, before we get taxes in May and June. And so, fifth consecutive year I've brought a, what is called a TAW, T-A-W, Tax Anticipation Warrant to You. And what they do is, I just borrow money in referendum, debt service, and pension, because those three are guaranteed to be funded. The Bond Bank fronts us $1 million. We populate those three funds, and then we pay our January bills right out of the gate, because I owe $1 million right out of the gate. We don't have any taxes that come in yet. We work with Crowe Horwath, which is an accounting firm, and we also work with the Indiana Bond Bank, and a law firm, to size those dollars, and so they're very careful. It was in the newspaper, and it was advertised, and then after it can be approved, then it would be in the newspaper seven days after our meeting as well, explaining that we're borrowing dollars.
Does the Bond Bank charge us interest?
Yes, it's very, very, it's 1% or less. It's very minute. In fact, it's always amazing to me how, for the amount of money they charge us, they can give us $1 million. But it's very short-term. I pay back a lot of the money in June. Right when we get our taxes, the Indiana Bond Bank sends us the invoice, he wires the money, and it's gone. So it's not like a mortgage payment, it's just a anticipated tax money of five months. Sometimes, though, they'll hold off money, because the debt service is so big, they'll wait the whole 12 months to get that money later on. But it's at a very reasonable rate, and with the budgets that are today, we don't have the cash balance to just, out of the gate in January, pay $1 million in bills. So it's very much necessary, or I wouldn't be able to pay the Bank of New York Mellon that bill that comes due on January 2nd.
And cities, towns, libraries, schools, all of the states of Indiana are doing this in November and December, because all the entities, because of profit tax caps, have lost cash balance. You know, if we go back 10, 15 years ago, we wouldn't have to do this, because we had cash balances.
Yeah, they didn't used to distribute dollars like this in the general fund, they would distribute it in two large lump sums. So you have enough money in your bank account to float yourself alone. Well, they don't allow for that anymore. They give us the money on the 15th of every month, just enough to pay that month's bills. So we no longer have the cash balances we used to. We used to hold 6 to 8 million dollars at any given time in our bank account. Now we're lucky if we have 2 million.
Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the Indiana Bond Bank Act's anticipation warrant resolution, correct?
Correct.
That's enough. So move.
Beth, second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we need to talk about office space.
Yeah, and that's the last thing for the Chamber of Commerce. We had talked about the partnership, and I can answer that. At the far end of our office space for the Hornet Richmond Academy, we have identified an office and a meeting room. And I met with Kelly Skilburn today, and talked about a possible move-in date, did she feel it was okay? There's a buzzer on the back door, is that going to bother you in your educational programming? She welcomed the opportunity, and I think she's going to use it as an incubator to let kind of some of her Richmond Academy see what it's like for a nonprofit organization to do fundraising, and to do monthly board meetings, and to do lunches. And so they may end up becoming kind of pro bono work for the Chamber in the future. So she was really excited about that, and we considered it, a couple of students could be, have problem-based learning programs, and assigned the Chamber to do research. How much money do they go through, look at their cash flow, pay their bills? How do they work through their board meetings? How do they choose an executive director? Things like that, so it could be a wonderful learning opportunity while we share our office space.
And not to mention the mentoring with all the businesses at Beech Grove. One of, Charnita's biggest jobs is school to work, school to career. So we have this plethora of all these businesses, I mean, once a month. Charnita is now going to the Chamber meetings, thanks to Melody for bringing her this last week, in fact, and we think it's just a real connection. And we're excited about that, even, and answer your partnership even more.
Is that something that they'll be there daily, or not necessarily?
They'll be in and out, because it's a job where, I mean, there will be daily presence, whether it's going to be an all-day thing, because they're going to be out talking to businesses, recruiting businesses, and things like that. Right now, we don't have an executive director for the Chamber, and the Chamber Board is meeting December for retreat, talk about what our needs are, so we will be recruiting a new executive director for the Chamber.
So it could be a paid decision.
It would be, yes.
Now, but, this is sort of a couple of questions, but I do this. With the Chamber, would they ever work with like the Small Business Association as well?
They do. They actually work with SBA to give workshops in the past, and things like that for small businesses. But I know that we desire to have a closer relationship there, too.
The reason I'm asking is twofold. One, because, you know, we just had a student of the month here who's talking about, he would love to have a restaurant these days. So something like that might bring him back, and we would have somebody to help him do that. And also, being part of the RDC, we learn about people who want to come in here all the time, who may not know how to run a business, but they've got a concept, they've got money, they've got, you know, ideas, and, and so, since we're partnering with them, maybe they could help us bring people in and teach these people how to make, do their budgets, and, you know, create a business plan, and it would help the city as well as the school.
Because Larry White is our Small Business Administration contact, so he's come and done trainings with the Chamber and things like that, so that is available. And as of, Tom and I are both on the board of directors for the Chamber, and we both and the entire board envision a larger vision for the Chamber, and to really do even more than we've already accomplished, more be able to help businesses, connect businesses. And then again, working with our students, because that's an important piece. They're just like our chef, those are our future business owners.
Right, exactly.
So it's something that we need to invest in.
Okay.
So that's why we feel like this is a really important piece that will bring us even closer. It'll benefit our students, it'll benefit our city, it'll benefit our school district.
And I'm going to encourage the Chamber to put out a nice sign with their emblem, and it has the Chamber logo that's, you know, got the Beech Grove, and put that out on the road on Hornet Avenue. I think that exposure, you know, it's going to just show a cooperation, a partnership, it's going to be really nice, it's right next to Huntington Bank. I just think that it I just think that it'll really show a nice, a nice cooperation in the real estate area, and I think it'll work out very well.
That sounds good. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution for donation of the office space?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Tim, who's second please? Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have personnel.
Most everything was described, I'll get a couple of highlights. I'm very excited to tell you that I spent quite a bit of time investing, investigating what it takes to be a mechanic for the school corporation. And Mr. Tracy Powers is a full-time mechanic from Wayne Township Schools, and I'm really excited to tell you he is an outstanding candidate. It is very much needed with the age of our buses now, and we were not able to turn over the fleet in the last ten years as much as we would like to financially and have all brand-new buses. And so with the age of our fleet and seven of them needing to be serviced and ready for state inspection twice per year, and I kind of talked about that during the bus replacement fund when I did the budget, it's critical that we get Mr. Tracy Powers employed and working. He also has a CDL license, so he was a unique opportunity because he can go out, pick up kids, drive kids to their next location, take the bus back if a bus is stranded somewhere. Very few of the other candidates had the ability to not only work on diesel engines, brakes, transmissions, but also have their CDL license where they can transport kids. So he's a pretty special individual and I'm excited to tell you that he has agreed and would like to work for us. Sarah Gray, Chelsea McGuinness, and are both teachers that I have recommended that are not in print in the personnel report. Sarah Gray is the high school special education teacher that Dr. Hammack mentioned, and then Chelsea McGuinness is a young lady that we have identified from Lighthouse Charter, and I'm really excited for her to fill that second grade, you know, I put it in quotations, emergency opening at Central, because we did have a teacher decide to transfer in the middle of the year, which doesn't happen very often. So Chelsea McGuinness is somebody and I will follow up tomorrow with her resume to you, but she's an outstanding individual. Dr. Hammack, you interviewed her?
You bet.
As well, and she's, she has the tools, I think, and she's versatile with her license, isn't she?
You bet, she is dual-sacred certified, which is something that we are really excited about when we see, and that she can teach general education as well as special education. She's a Beech Grove High School graduate, I mean, that's a neat thing, when you get someone who's back home. It was so sweet, she said that she couldn't wait to be a Hornet again. It was adorable, yeah.
She lives here in Beech Grove, which is an outstanding opportunity to grab a teacher that's local. And she never really did move away, she just did her education and her training, did some student teaching outside of our district, but has just been waiting to have the opportunity. And so I'm excited to recommend her. Also, the final recommendation that's not in print in my report, but does dovetail off of the operations report, is the maintenance and custodial. And so you might want him to explain, Brian can explain the maintenance and custodial before you approve the full personnel report, so that we notice that that's in connection because it is a transition of summer employees to fill the gaps necessary for evening stuff, and I won't go on any further, if you want to explain that part?
Yeah, so Matt Skirbin and Ben Walters were currently temporary employees just during the summer. We are moving to hire them both full-time. Ben Walters will stay day shift with Keith Hill, who's currently already a full-time employee. Hill will stay outside, do the normal ground stuff, go inside when it's cold or snowy and stuff, do everything like that. Tim Babett Jr. is currently employed, and then Matt Skirbin will shift to night shift, December 2nd, actually. And they will work on painting and carpet, and kind of just touching up the building where we haven't painted in a few years. South Grove's getting a new HVAC project. To save money on our end, we're gonna have them do the carpet work and have them do the painting as the HVAC is going on, so we can have our own people in there and just kind of, you know, squeeze a few pennies out of that project as well. With that transition, Matt and Ben, they were on a temporary salary of ten dollars an hour, they'll move to eleven, which is what we've been paying everybody full-time. Tim Babett Jr. was making eleven, will be the lead at nighttime, so he'll be our main contact, will work with our contractors at night, allow everybody to get in, be our project lead on everything. We want to move him to twelve, and then he is a very intelligent young man, gentleman, I guess. And he is getting his pool certification, which I believe he just finished, and he's also getting a certification with spray, which is huge for us because right now Dale Reed is our only certified chemical sprayer to spray for pesticides, spray for weed killer, anything like that around the corporation. So with those, they're so important to us that we want to give him fifty cents for each license as he finishes, which will put him at thirteen dollars when he's all done, but will also give us the very valuable resource of, instead of having to call True Green or somebody like that, we can truly just send him out with chemicals, he'll know how to mix them, and then him and Dale can pretty well just kind of take care of the whole corporation on that end.
Do we pay for their certifications? When they go, do we?
Most of them are actually free.
I think it's free.
It's free.
For the most part. The chemical certification, I think there's a small few to take the test, we usually cover.
Correct. Okay, I was just gonna say, I thought.
Yeah, the classes are, yeah, the classes, they go up to Purdue University, there's a nice cooperative there that kind of helps public schools, and it's been, it's been an ongoing learning process of professional development, so it's actually a pretty good cooperation with Purdue. I do want to thank Brian, I couldn't, you know, to take time to redevelop what is necessary, and I'll use your phrase, the holes in our cheese. You know, I just kind of floated that, I said, we gotta do something, you know, we gotta have paint, and Paul and I kind of put out the goals and said, what are we gonna do, you know, can you work on this? And I literally was like, here, take this. And this is the recommendation that's come out of that. So this is kind of the fruits of our labor of the transition that we talked about a month or two ago, and so this is kind of that recommendation.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Dale is the actual pesticide applicator, holds the three A or seven B.
So currently, Tim Babett and Dale Reed both hold the top, you know, license that there is. Underneath that, you can sub-certify somebody underneath him to spray underneath your license.
Right, registered technicians.
Yes. So Junior will have the license to spray under Dale. With Tim Babett still here, technically, they can all spray under Tim, or they can spray under Dale. So as long as Dale or Tim Senior's still here, they'll be able to spray under.
So you have two right now that are actually certified pesticide applicators?
Yes.
But no registered technicians?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna get?
One.
One registered technician?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have to pay for the classes that we go through every year for the CCHs because it's eight continuing credit hours for the RTs, registered technicians, at Purdue.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know, if you guys aren't paying for it, then, you know, kudos for you because it's quite expensive.
I know there are a few that they do attend, and education-wise, we get huge discounts on them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Tim Babett, I mean, it's like a hundred dollars to just get everything wiped out for the year. And, you know, he just sent us?
Full day.
Yeah, full day, sometimes it's two days, you know, we just pay for him to go up there. A lot of times, he'll even drive back that night, not even request a hotel or anything, so.
Yeah, and I did pay, I do remember now, I did pay because Dale asked me to stay, if he could stay the night between a Monday and Tuesday instead of driving back to the east side here from Purdue. I do remember that, that I did, I did end up paying for his lodging on one Monday, Tuesday at Purdue, for him to get that big, whatever, the application, because that does take some time. So we just, we just accomplished that this last time.
Now, does the office of the state chemists send the licenses to the school system and the employee, or do they mail them directly to them?
They mail them directly to them, and what we told Tim Babett Jr. is, we have to, we want all of his license with a copy on file on our site, so. And we told him as soon as he has his copies on file, and that's when the extra fifty cents will take effect.
Any other questions? Okay. Need a motion to approve these employment recommendations? So move.
Who's second, Beth?
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Brian, do you have more operations applications?
Yep, so there's one other thing in operations, the Indiana Bond Bank, along with the TAWs and a few other things they do, they have a fuel budgeting program. What this program basically does, Tom and I were talking about it earlier, it's basically a thousand-dollar maximum expenditure per year kind of insurance. There's a low and a high end on diesel and regular fuel, so during the year, if there's, you know, what was it called, from Mexico a few years ago, the leak in the pipe, anything like that, that fuel skyrockets, instead of us having to worry about, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget for fuel this year, and all of a sudden, we're paying two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we always pay a hundred and fifty because they'll send us a check if gas jumps to five dollars a gallon or anything like that. Most of the time, just general maintenance, when fuel stays kind of general range, sixty dollars a month to keep the program going, which in the big scheme of things is extremely inexpensive for what we're dealing with. It's just a great tool for Tom and I in order to predict the budget throughout the year, it gives us good, solid guidelines of where fuel prices will be, and they insure it all.
Yep, it's a basic insurance program to make sure that if fuel just goes out of this world, we're stabilized. So at least for a year, so that's a good.
Any questions? Somebody making a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt the bond.
Aye. Who's second, please? Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we, I think we have four donations that we need to make a motion to approve.
I motion to approve the donations.
Tammy?
I will say.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you have a question, Mike? Sorry.
No, I said aye, I'm trying not to yawn.
Sorry. And then we have a motion to approve an overnight wrestling trip to Connersville High School. Who would like to, anybody have any questions about that before we approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Tim? Second, Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then Paul, you'd like to talk to the district, about the district community council meeting?
We're in the process right now of each principal submitting ten names of people who serve on a district community council. Our first meeting is Thursday, December 5th. If you are a patron, if you don't have any kids in the school and you'd like to be part of that process, please drop me an email or a phone call, and we'd love to have some more community members that do not have kids in school to serve on that as we talk about events and activities and everything from standardized dress to other activities, that will be part of our topic for this year.
So nine of the Pittsburgh South Grove's music program.
Okay, we can change it. We haven't called anybody yet, we'll look at another day. So, or we can just wait and have our first meeting in January, because December's a crazy time, does that make sense to everybody?
Not yet, that is.
Yeah, that'd be great. After all, always.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have anything else? Questions, concerns? Kudos.
Congrats to the band, that was awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Oh, did you find out anything about the, that email?
Yes, it's, thank you very much, I have it on here. As of yesterday, Dale has taken one of his maintenance guys, and they are responsible for loading buses in and out of Hornet Park. We're gonna get a nice bright vest and a, and a sign, and Mike brought it up, and it's crazy trying to get in and out with our buses in the mornings. We even had discussion today with our staff, and we're even trying to change the start of the school day between high school and Hornet Park, that's something we'll look at. So I'm not sure who got the lucky straw to be out there, but we have someone out there as of yesterday, and both at the, in the morning to stop traffic and get our few buses that need to get out.
Yeah, I can't remember what I was going over there for, but it was like that bus took forever even.
Yeah, you can't, you can't take a left down. You turn right, but you can't get left in. And they're off to the next round of the building, so thanks for bringing that up. We'll let that take care of it.
Anyone else? I need a motion to adjourn. Tim, who wants a second? Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.